Good evening and welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting. Today is July 5th and it's 7:03. First order of business is to call to order a meeting of the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Fund. Ms. Conlon?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Mr. Burns, yes. So, on our agenda first is an update from the Milton Residence Fund. So, if we could have Ms. Ferrari come up with the Milton Residence Fund, that'd be great to give us a nice update.
Thank you, I'd be happy to. I printed a report that is a little more complicated than it needs to be.
Sure, that's how you are. You're very thorough.
And this one...
Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
I was last here in October and you can see on this sheet, I've highlighted, well, first of all, "Good Evening," and I should tell you who I brought with me. Sorry. Thank you for having us again. And recently, few of the trustees of the Henry Martin Fund and SWIFT Charity met with Mike at our church next door. And we just, there's so much happening in the town. There's a little rumor that there may be some funds coming towards the Governor Stoughton Fund. And we have been serving the needs of the poor and struggling in town for well over 100 years. And we've been looking at our books and realizing that since 2008, we've kept our assistance to the poor and low income at the same level while the stock market, things have changed. And, well, we talked about that at length with Michael. And this is Andrew Maloney and Ruth Hannan, two of the people on our board. So, anyway, the most important thing, I think, is that we've found that we're spending a little more on our investments and we're just hoping to let you know of this issue for us. And also, at the same time, the needs have continued in the town. So, we're kind of, we're just updating you so that you'll know that we love your continued support. And if you have it in your mind that maybe you could increase your support in the future, we were thinking of...
Do you have a number?
Well, we talked about that with Mike. Here's the thing that I'm concerned about with the changes coming possibly with an influx of funds to Governor Stoughton. You know, in the selectman office, when people have a need, they call the selectman's office and then they're referred to me. So, what I need to let you know is that where I'm pretty full on, in terms of workload in the office. And over the last two years, the directors have been able to hire an assistant for me. But we weren't sure if we could find that money in the budget at all for this year. And that assistant works heavily on the outreach around the holiday community program. So, we are hoping to have her back again this year. I think we gave her $5,000 last year, but her work began in September and went through all the way to the first week in January. I'd love for her to be able to be more of a permanent addition. I'd love to have two of us working together, but right now, that's completely out of the question for the directors and for where they are. I don't know, Andrew, if, right now, it'd be helpful to have 5,000 to have her continue to assist me with the holiday program. It's really, it's more than holiday gifts to the 250 children we serve. It's more like really bringing the community together, reaching all the different generous groups in the community, from the Women's Club to the seniors at Fuller, to the Milton Helping Hands, to all the schools that participate in bringing in gifts, Fontbonne, Milton Academy. We really, we've really made people aware that there are people in need. And I think, once people hear of a need, they want to help. So...
So, this is an outreach, your assistant is basically an outreach coordinator?
Yes.
That builds relationships and partnerships throughout the town to raise awareness and to find people in need?
Right. She assists me in every way possible. She meets with the PTOs. We've been able to accomplish a lot. We have our website up and running, thanks to Mara's assistance. And I'd like to at least have her again for the holidays and maybe at some point, have her year-round.
Great. Well, obviously, you guys do a lot of great work and we're thankful, you know, for your outreach and the generosity that you bring to much-needed families. As we all know, there are a lot of families in need in our town and that they really appreciate the generosity that you all share.
Thank you. And we appreciate your continuing support of the Milton Residence Fund. And if I might, if you'd indulge me for a minute or two, I might be able to more fully describe the entities that provide the outreach and also the support for the social worker because there are a number of different organizations. I've got a little handout. And I should say, by way of background, Andrew Maloney, I've been involved in First Parish in Milton for 25 years or more. And my colleague, Ruth Hannan, has been involved for maybe a few years longer than I have. And we've each had different leadership roles at First Parish. And as a coincidence, longstanding coincidence, the restricted endowment of First Parish was donated by Milton Residence for specific purposes, and that's our restricted endowment. But there are two other charitable and nonprofit organizations, the Henry B. Martin Fund and the SWIFT Charity, which together are above $4 million of assets that are managed professionally and pay Diane's salary and benefits in support of the work that she does. About seven years ago, the Copeland Foundation sent a $5,000 check to each church or synagogue in town. And with Diane's help, we prepared a little report to say, this is where it went to, you know, $500 was for a fuel allowance for one family, those kinds of things. And the following year and each year since then, they've given us $35,000 a year. So, those are the community-based organizations that you see off on the right-hand side of the chart, the Copeland Foundation, of course, the Governor Stoughton Fund, Milton Helping Hands. And each one of those entities pays out from its endowment, 3% or 5% or 8% or more, to provide roughly $225,000 or $30,000 of support to people in Milton. The three entities, First Parish, Henry Martin, and SWIFT Charity, pay the salary and rental and IT and rent expense for Diane's office. So, we had an idea and that we were fortunate enough to reach out to Mike Dennehy, who spent an hour with us a couple of weeks ago, to say, it seems that the Governor Stoughton Fund will very quickly be at a point that it took us 200 years to get to, where informally we were working among various members of the congregation who knew about people's circumstances, which evolved probably 17 years ago or so, where we hired a professional social worker, where people in the congregation who worked in finance and other boring fields related to finance managed the money informally. But about 15 years ago, we retained professional investment management. Thinking that the Governor Stoughton Fund may receive $5 million or more in funds, we thought we should offer any kind of assistance and any kind of help that we can provide to the trustees of the Governor Stoughton Fund as they, as they think about what they may be doing going forward.
Great, well, I appreciate that update. That's very nice. I'm fine with this. I believe that, you know, I think we have, I don't know the exact figure.
Fair enough.
We have 200 and somewhat thousand, I believe, 40...
296.
296, okay.
Do you mean for the request for 5,000 for the current year?
For the current year, yeah.
Okay.
So, if...
I'd be willing to make a motion if you entertain it.
I thought this was just an update, so I wasn't expecting a request tonight, but that's how it's given on our agenda.
Well, it is, right. I usually come in the fall with a specific request for fuel assistance. So, thinking already about the holiday program is how I came up with a request, a separate request for that because she'll need to get started in September again. And I think it's a program that's well worth continuing.
I'm fine, I'll make the motion now if you want to put it on the agenda for another meeting.
I'm not sure that we can. I don't think it's properly noticed, Richard, unfortunately, for tonight's agenda. So, I don't think we can act...
Yeah, we don't have it as a motion. I didn't know if we were able to entertain one, but we could probably, I think it makes sense for us to have you come back in to a future meeting with a motion in front of us for that specific request. You know, obviously, we've had a little discussion about it now, we can have a deeper discussion then.
Great, we'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, that's great. But I think this is a great update. I think this is, it's good to know where you are and what your needs are, especially right now. I think that that's definitely going to be helpful for us moving forward.
Okay.
Andrew, this sheet was very helpful because this actually answers questions I had about the sheet that Diane gave about the other stories.
Same here, which is great.
Because it wasn't really clear whether that was, you know, just income from these, the SWIFT Fund and the Henry Martin Fund that are being paid out to you every year. So, you've answered some questions on that. I think, it sounds like we're all open to considering this $5,000 request, it's just not properly on, it's not styled as an agenda item for that for tonight.
Okay.
In terms of the $5 million, I know that the Affordable Housing Trust has had some discussion about possibly seeking some funding based on that. And obviously, this $5 million, we're going to want to be sure is managed, you know, to preserve it for as long as possible because once the, once the money's in the account and the land is gone, I mean, the money is then the asset, other than the remaining four acres, which we still have to figure out what we're going to be doing with. But I'm just letting you know, I'm anticipating we're going to be getting some other requests as well. So, yours sounds like a very small amount compared to what the Affordable Housing Trustees at one point in time, a year or two ago, were talking about seeking.
Right, right.
So, it sounds very modest and it sounds as though it would be doable.
To be clear, we'll come back with a motion at your convenience to ask for the $5,000 for the intern as well as $5,000 of support, which I believe you provided last year. So, that's what the ask will be.
Yeah. I think it has varied year to year and during the course of the whole year, I've come with requests for specific families.
Yeah.
But we did want to get here because we are thinking about our needs going forward and then the potential of making some type of a connection, not just for the intern, for the holidays, but for, I think, the need to have a person here, you know, at the town level to work with me to meet the needs of the poor and low income. Because we've really worked as hard as we can and I think there's more that could be done. And another person might be helpful in that vein.
We'd be, we'd be interested in listening to that.
Okay.
And certainly look forward to seeing you at a future meeting and fulfilling this request.
Don't worry, I just want to say a couple of things. You know, I've been with you on some very hard cases in this town. Sometimes, and I speak in two ways, one is that what you do in here and the people that you help in this community, many have no idea about. They don't know the houses you go into, the gas bills, the electrical bills, the people who are alone and no one knows about. But as much as you don't see it very often, it does exist. And the second aspect of it, philanthropy is a very humbling thing in life. It's something that came into my life and, as you know, in another hat that I wear, that we've had a relationship there. And I understand wholeheartedly what you are fighting for and what you do for this town, especially those who have no voice and have no ability. It's an awful thing not to be able to pay your, it's an awful thing not to have food. It's an awful thing not to know how you're going to pay your rent, your electricity, your live the next day. And it's a very credible thing that you do and you know that I think that and...
Thank you.
Whatever I can do personally here as a member of this board, I will do for you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all of your good work. We appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate you coming in.
I'd just add one more thing. So, I had an hour with him. And to Richard's point, the hot-wrenching stories when you drill down onto some of the, some of the individual people and I will honestly say, lives that are saved just with this one reaction and this one, and this one act of philanthropy. So, continued great support and keep up the good work.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Don't wait, do this sooner versus, tell Mr. Day sooner versus later.
Thank you, have a good evening. The next agenda item, a meeting of our trustees, is the approval of the pest house letter. Current tenant at 208 Governor Stoughton Road, also known as the Pest House, is currently a tenant at Will. And so, we have to determine a deadline for the vacancy in order to issue a letter and initiate notification process. So, we have with us our town planner, Bill Clack. Can you give us an update, Bill?
In order to go and pass papers on the property, the property is expected to be free of all tenants. That's one of the requirements of PULTI. The present renter at that property has been there for 15-plus years. And it's not that we're trying to take and push him and rush him, but we need to at least serve the time period that we're noticing him of vacating the property. We still don't have a permit from DCR for the access. DCR's departments have taken and reviewed it. They've come back with some pretty in-depth comments that still have to be addressed. I'm not sure how long that's going to take. I don't know that it's, it's not that long, but there is some engineering and other background work that need to be done. In the meantime, it's just starting the clock for the tenant and having him realize that it's not a, it's not a forever property.
So, can we get an update on where we're at with PULTI? Because I think that really, that will really drive what we need to give Mr. Fitzgerald in terms of notice.
Yep.
I agree.
The special permit has been issued by the planning board. The order conditions for the property from the Conservation Commission, I believe, has been issued for the property. Mass Historic has signed off on it. DCR has the, Milton Historic Commission has signed off on it. DCR's Historic is due to sign it, then it gets back to Mass Historic. It's been there for a little over a month. I'm going to have to start calling and find out where the letter went. The most important part, or the onerous part at this point, is the access permit for creating the roadway off of Unquity Road. That's the only permit that's out there outstanding.
That's from DCR?
Yes.
Correct.
That's for the access up off of Unquity straight into the property?
Yes, yep. And they received it two months ago? Three, they received the...
We started doing this in April officially with them. We had meetings...
With DCR?
With DCR. We had meetings with them in town in April to go through what the next steps would be. Who they are in January and February. April, we submitted the stuff and it's been hurry up and wait.
Yeah, the traffic engineer of 41 years retired in January, so as you can imagine, there's a huge void to be filled. But they did send comments back and PULTI is going to review those and re-engineer.
My only question, because I don't know how long this is going on, does he know this is coming?
Yes.
Yeah.
In the timeframe we're going to give, does he know the timeframe we're going to give him or...
Well, we have to decide that based upon this feedback that we're receiving now and come up with a date that's, you know, that can be considered, you know, really, we want to be sensitive, obviously. No question about that. But we do have to come up with this, with a date and move forward on this.
We have to give him at least 30 days.
Yeah.
So, would it make sense to give him until August 31st, which is a little more than a month? But it doesn't sound, I mean, unless there's something, Bill or Mike, that you know of that might make it possible for us to do that closing before, then it doesn't sound that that's at all likely.
Right.
I would like to give him at least the summer. I think that, I think it makes sense for us and him. I think, you know, we don't have some answers yet and, you know, if it gives him a little bit more time, then I think that would be helpful. So, why don't we make a motion then?
I'll move that we approve and sign a letter to the tenant of 208 Governor Stoughton Lane, ordering that the property be vacated by August 31st, 2017.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
No.
So, no discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and that...
This building's being saved, right? Am I correct?
Correct.
The plan is to move this building from its current location. Right now, when you come in off of Governor Stoughton Lane, that property is down to the left. They'll move it up that driveway and it would be just before you enter the, as you enter the property, it'd be on the right-hand side of the existing driveway now, right beside the main aunt's house.
Is this up to PULTI to do this?
It's up to PULTI to do that.
Okay.
They'll put in a new foundation, they'll connect it up to all the utilities.
Okay.
They'll move it, they won't fix the inside, but they will make sure that all the utilities work inside the building.
Great. Okay, we have a motion to adjourn now.
Some would.
Okay, and now I'd like to call to order a meeting of the Board of Selectmen. And it is 7:24 on my watch. The first order of business is to review and approve meeting minutes.
And we have a note here from Ms. Martin that one of the items on the minutes, because she had to step out of the room at that last meeting and unfortunately, the tape got lost, so it wasn't clear who made the motion, who seconded it. I could, she did ask me, I couldn't remember. Richard, do you know, do you happen to recall who, on item number seven?
Item number seven, yeah.
If not, I thought we could just say that on a motion duly made and seconded, the board voted unanimously, given that, unless anyone clearly has a memory of that.
I, my memory, in most motions, you go first, if it was, you should go first and I go second.
Well, we try to rotate them back and forth, like number eight...
Was it a first or a second? What, it was item seven?
It's item seven, yeah.
It's item number seven. It was about the town meeting date.
Yeah, I don't recall.
If, it sounds like if none of us can, I think we could just say, on a motion duly made and seconded, the board voted unanimously. So, I'll offer that as a amendment.
I'll make a motion to approve that in the language you're just using, the verbiage that Katie just used. Is that all right?
Yes.
Yep, okay.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Great. Okay, so we also have a motion, though, to approve the meeting minutes for June 22nd, as amended. I guess we could call that, we could use that last item as the actual vote.
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. Let's confirm your future meeting dates. This board is going to meet again on July 24th. The August dates would be August 7th and 21st. I know it could be tougher some with some vacations coming up. August 7th is a tough one for me. I'm actually going to be away, so if we could look to move that.
I'm fine with that.
August 21st is tough for me because I've got a master plan committee meeting that night. Now, I could ask them to reschedule. There's been some difficulty getting a night for all of those members.
Okay, would it be possible, possible to do the week in between?
So, the 14th through the 28th?
Like the 14th, maybe in the 28th, yeah.
Those work for me, too.
Okay, good. All right, citizens speak. Anybody here to address citizens speak tonight? Okay, seeing how nobody is here for that. Number five on our agenda is acceptance of the Copeland Family Foundation donation to the Milton Fire Department. The Copeland Family Foundation has made a gift in the amount of $20,000 for members of the Milton Fire Department to attend a workshop given by 02X, which will provide instruction on resilience, nutrition, prehabilitation, rehabilitation, physical fitness and injury prevention. The department has already had eight members attend this training with great reviews. So, we have with us Chief Jack Grant tonight.
I'll use myself first. So, just, so for a point of, as I said, we knew this was going to come at some point that, given the role that I play in the Copeland Foundation and I have great pride in that, I wish you all the best and I'll use myself on items five and six. Okay.
Thank you. So, we have with us Chief Jack Grant. Jack, obviously, you know this program. Pays dividends?
Yes. First, I'm going to apologize for appearing before you in a T-shirt.
Whatever, worried about that.
Ironically, Emily and I had a discussion tonight about meeting attire, but we wound up, not long after I left you, we had a garage fire, so I'm coming from there. But, yeah, the 02X program, the knowledge of it came to us through Boston Fire. And they, at one point in time, offered it to any sitting member of the department that wished to participate in it. They didn't make it mandatory, you know, for a 30-year guy to go to it, but it was made available. Since then, they've continued every recruit class that they hire goes through the program. They're probably in their third year at this point, maybe, it could be, it could be the second, but, you know, they're already seeing marked data that they can point to to say that this has shown reduction in injuries for them. You know, they're hoping over time, it will show reduction in illness and disease as well. The resilience portion covers some of that. But as you said, the eight members of our group that have already attended came back and had rave reviews for it. You know, some of them, if offered, would go and take it a second time.
I can imagine that this is a really good exercise for your men and women. You know, I think that it obviously provides them opportunity to learn more about how to take care of themselves, which then in turn, keeps them on the job longer, less sick time potentially, and also supports them where they need it.
Absolutely. It's, I'll give you a case in point myself, that there's also, there's an online portion as well that provides nutrition tips on a weekly basis and it gives you a daily workout and stresses that, you know, warm-up and cool-down period as well. When they came in to present the online portion, you know, they spent a morning with us and went through, you know, if you're, if you're not doing warm-up, if you're not doing cool-down, if you're doing this and this and this, here's where you're going to hurt yourself and here's the injuries you're going to get. And at least three of them applied to me. So, probably too late in the game for me to completely reverse everything, but since that time, I'm religiously following that warm-up, cool-down. And my joints are doing things that I couldn't do a couple of years ago.
Well, that's great news.
So, firsthand, I can speak very highly of it.
Yeah, that's great. It obviously comes highly recommended, you know, and with Boston Fire offering it, I think that, you know, any way that we can support you, and it's great that the Copeland Family Foundation sees that this is a great need of yours. You know, I think that it helps your people, but also, it helps the residents, too.
It really does. You know, like you say, you're able to, in the street, do your job better. Budgetarily, hopefully, do your job better because there's less downtime. You know, I'd love to be in the situation, you know, that Boston's in to run everybody through, just not feasible. But, you know, with help like this, this is a great step forward. And as we go further into the years here, the resilience portion is going to become more and more important as well. You know, the vast majority of the younger employees that we have and will continue to have are veterans and, you know, veterans who are coming back from, you know, seeing horrible things and seeing the after-effects of that in many different ways. And Dick could attest to it in conversation as well, both on the fire and police side. You know, you're seeing a large upswing in suicide. So, the whole component of this course is, you know, it's really going to pay dividends.
Right.
And they're bringing in experts, you know, from around the country for these things. So, it's not just, you know, some guy down the street that says, hey, this is the way you should be doing this. And like I said, it's from our own guys from Boston. Most of the departments around like us are doing it the same way as we are, getting as many people as they can afford to in here and there. And it's just been rave reviews from everybody.
That's great. Well, we're awfully appreciative of the Copeland Family Foundation and glad that we're able to support you. We have a motion before us tonight.
So, I'm going to move that we accept a donation from the Copeland Family Foundation to the Milton Fire Department in the amount of $20,000 for the purpose of sending firefighters to attend training workshops.
And I'll second that motion. Any discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Chief.
I'll close in offering my sincere thanks and appreciation to the Copelands for this. And thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Have a good night, Chief.
You, too. Take care.
Next order of business is acceptance of another Copeland Family Foundation donation to the Milton Council on Aging. The Copeland Family Foundation has made a gift in the amount of $20,000 to support operation of the council's van service, which we know has been awfully efficient in helping us outreach and get some of our seniors to places that they need to be.
So, I'll move that we accept a donation from the Copeland Family Foundation to the Milton Council on Aging in the amount of $25,000 to be used to support the operation of the council's vans.
I inadvertently said 20. It is $25,000, so... and I'll second that motion. Any discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have Veterans Agent Kevin Cook.
Richard.
To come in, we can ask Richard to join us again from now. Kevin's going to be discussing our 2017 Veterans Day celebration. We'll wait till Richard comes in, but thank you for coming in, Kevin.
No worries. It's good to be here. It's all late night, because this stuff is very important, so I want to make sure we get your input and have a chance to discuss some issues, but we'll wait for a selection.
He should be in momentarily.
I hope you accepted those.
We sure did.
We did, with our thanks.
Our thanks, yep. So, we have Kevin Cook here to talk about our Veterans Day celebration. And again, thank you, Kevin, for coming in.
Oh, no worries. I'm not here often enough, but I'm glad to have the opportunity tonight. Thank you for putting me on the agenda so quickly upon my request. I want to express my overwhelming thanks for the support of our town administrator. You know, we've developed a great working relationship since his coming on board. It was a smooth transition. We've had a number of opportunities to discuss different things. The board has also been very supportive. I know that the override was kind of a, you know, a difficult process for everyone, but the... I heard a number of people came to me and said there was overwhelming support at town meeting also for the veterans. So, I thank the residents of Milton for all their overwhelming support. You know, the work I do at the Veterans Office every day is just, you know, it's my reward to see how well we do take care of our veterans, especially in a community like Milton. We have a large number of veterans here. You know, it's not always the person you know, but, you know, you might see them at the store, someone else. They're just kind of quiet, you know, self-facing people, so when they do need help, we want to be there for them.
Well, I can say that we certainly see the passion and your efforts. It's duly noted, and it's totally appreciated from this board, but also from people in the town who have been a part of those celebrations, that you've helped, you know, work with our members and from our office and also the Legion post, and it's been a huge success. And so, we're very thankful to have you and your team working with us.
Yeah, we need partners in the community. There's no way any one person could do this alone. I do regret that I wasn't here for Memorial Day. I'm kind of like the child of divorced parents. I have to decide which Christmas I'm going to go attend. But what I understand is the featured speaker we got from the Naval War Academy was awesome. A lot of people had a lot of really great feedback, and the ceremony went off... well, we got into the cemetery this year. We didn't have to try to shuffle into the COA, which I guess was a great relief.
We held the weather off, and it was a tremendous ceremony with a great crowd, and it was really appreciated.
And that's kind of why I'm here today, because we're going to continue to build on that success. It's July the 5th, you know, we just got past July the 4th, but, you know, for me, Veterans Day is now, you know, the next kind of hurdle to look at and what we're going to do. It falls on a Saturday this year. That's kind of a really good thing, because as I was saying earlier, I hate it when it's kind of in the middle of the week, because it's the 11th day, 11th month. There's no way around it. And when it gets in on like a Wednesday, it's like it's tough, because people have to work, and not every company will give people time off, and there's other things going on around that time of year. So, we're actually planning probably a very robust ceremony. I'm thinking there's going to be a large turnout by the town, and I'm looking forward to it. We're building on the success of last year's Veterans Day, where we honored the Korean veterans, and this year, the theme is going to be our Vietnam veterans. Highly overdue. You know, unfortunate... I can't tell you how many Vietnam vets I run into, and the first thing I say to them is like, you know, you guys really got the short end. You know, you weren't given the welcome home that I got from Iraqi Freedom, and our OEF veterans are getting from Afghanistan. You know, they deserved it. So, we want to definitely take care of the Vietnam veterans and make sure the people of Milton recognize the service they gave us in the jungles of Vietnam, and of course, the offshore support and around the world. What we'd like to do this year is plan a POW MIA chair ceremony. We did one of these in Randolph last year at the insistence of David Murphy. Of course, Randolph being the home to Maureen Dunn, the founder of the POW MIA family movement. You know, he said to me when I came on board, within four months, right after we got past Memorial Day, he goes, hey, chair, you know, make it happen. And it's like, yeah, it was overdue, you know. Maureen passed away in 2013, and not to have a chair in Randolph was kind of like a glaring error. And we got everybody together, and we had an incredible ceremony there at Randolph Town Hall. We had a number of people come and turn up. We were able to bring in the Boston Police Bagpipers, who did a great job. We had some National Guards troops. We actually had a gentleman from the VA that I work with named Tim Sullivan. He was a POW in Vietnam. So, he spoke, and his speech about how much of a difference the efforts Maureen Dunn made on him as a prisoner, because the minute that started, everything changed for him in Vietnam, everything. He said all the torture and the beating stopped, because the world's attention was brought to the plight of the POWs. So, you know, we're looking to do something very similar here in Milton. We have an opportunity to kind of really tie these two things together, Vietnam and the POW MIA movement, was where it really started, and show people that we're going to have a chair here in Milton that'll always be vacant, waiting for people to come home. Of course, there's a number of issues about this, and I'm going to kind of get into it. So, I want to kind of get some of your feedback, and, you know, your thoughts, obviously. This is the Milton Town Hall, and you're the selectman, and I'm still a newcomer to town. So, what we want to do is kind of look at how and where we could place the chair. You know, we do have a lobby upstairs that's got a number of kind of war memorials and other things, but the thought is we could kind of use this as an opportunity to refresh the area and kind of figure out where it would best fit. Normally, the chair would sit on a small platform. It doesn't have to be anything large, but it would also be roped off, and there's normally a plaque recognizing the chair is, you know, the Chair of Honor. You know, there's a number of formats on how these things are done, and, you know, I used these before, so I can kind of, you know, come up with some ideas. But it's the placement of the chair and where you feel it would be appropriate. So, that's kind of why I'm here today first, to kind of seek some of your input, let you think about that, and then maybe get back to me with some ideas on what you think would be best.
I think that's a good idea, and again, I think it's admirable that we're recognizing, you know, the Vietnam War heroes and veterans. I think it's, you know, it's overdue as well, and I think having a chair, you know, to be there for those that come home, that would be an amazing ceremony for us.
Yeah, it'll be one of the first things, hopefully, that people see when they come into Town Hall, you know. It's... that's in Randolph right now, you walk into the Town Hall, it's one of the first things you're going to see. So, it really kind of sets the tone for everything from that point forward. It brings attention to Randolph, or to Milton's desire to honor its veterans and those who never made it home. You know, we've looked at, of course, the ceremony. We're going to incorporate and want to bring together, you know, the veterans organizations, the Legion. There's a group called Rolling Thunder that does a lot of these ceremonies. We're going to seek their help and assistance, because they've kind of been like the champions of these in different towns. They'll bring out, you know, 50, 75 motorcyclists with the flags and everything like that. It's kind of really just an awe-inspiring thing, the things you've seen, you know, in Boston and other communities where they've come out and helped. There's also a group called the Patriot Riders, who also honor veterans, so go look to tap into them. Our state and local officials, of course, obviously, you know, Senator Tomolte and all the reps and different people. I'll throw an invite out to the governor and, you know, a number of the other people and see if we can get them to come, because we'd like to have them here. And of course, the citizens participating, especially like last year with the school kids, which I think was an overwhelming success, you know, working with Dr. Spaulding down at the middle school and Principal Jared up there at the high school, just awesome, awesome, awesome stuff. So, I want to kind of continue that moving forward, because, you know, this kind of ceremony, it's about the community. It's honoring the veterans, but it's... I want to have everybody to have a chance to participate in it as much as possible.
Yeah, I think we have... we've always had a great number of families come out with their young kids, and I think it's very special for them to learn a lot about the history, and I think that building that community and being a part of it is very special for them.
Yeah, the young lady last year designed the winning poster, whose grandfather has PTSD. Amazing stuff. So, one of the first things, of course, is we're seeking funds for whatever work we do in the lobby. I think there's a number of sources that would donate and actually give some funds. I think we could, you know, even look to take a small amount of funds out of the veterans' funds that we have. We did, I think, I believe, return about $20,000 or $30,000 last year out of our budget. We always budget up a little bit, because we never know if a new family might show up. So, you know, something like that is... it's the same as buying the flags, you know, for Memorial Day. You know, we're putting something into that's honoring veterans. So, you know, I'd like to get some ideas from people on what you think. Once we get a kind of an idea of how we want to do it, and then, you know, assess the cost. I know that probably different members of the community, some of the guys from the buildings, maintenance group and the DPW would probably donate some of their time. When we were down at Randolph, the chair was actually made by one of the town employees' husband. He's a furniture craftsman. So, he actually designed it and made the chair. So, you know, there's different ways we can kind of tie this into the community and give everybody a chance to contribute, and I think that's what I'd like to do, more than anything, to make it a homegrown effort, you know. And then, of course, the plaque... the plaque we got for Randolph cost approximately $400. There was an embossing company in Boston at the Jeweler's Building, does a really beautiful job. They laser emboss it, it comes out really nice. It's usually like black with highlighted letters and stuff like that, and they get the POW MIA symbol on it. And then, kind of going into something that I've been trying to work on, too, kind of in the background here. In Randolph, we have a fund right now that I inherited when I came on board, and it's established by the veterans organizations in the town. And it's kind of like we're talking about the Governor Stoughton Fund. It's there as a kind of a resource for myself to work with the town and the veterans. So, in Randolph, a veteran comes to me and says, hey, you know, I'm stuck. You know, I'm out of money, but, you know, I'm going to work and stuff, but, you know, the transmission just died. And he sits down with me, and we kind of go all through his financials and talk about things, and he says, you know, I need like $450 to get my car up and run it again. It's the only vehicle we got. So, we do that, and then we're able to administer the money out of that fund, and on a regular basis, the AMVets, the VFW, and other people contribute money to that fund solely for that purpose. So, the fund is held by the Friends of the Senior Center in Randolph. They're a 501(c)(3), and basically, there's a number of people who are signatories on the fund, but I'm not. So, I'm kind of like the manager-requester. So, I go to them and say, hey, I've got a veteran came to me. He's, you know, he's stuck, and here's what he needs. They kind of review my request and then say, okay, you validated, yep. And then they sign off the check, and we give the check to the veteran. Normally, like if he says it's like a car repair, we make the check out to the shop, you know. Here's the invoice, and there you go. So, it's a way of giving people, and especially needy veterans, another outlet. So, I'm looking to kind of find a vehicle to create something similar, and I think believe you and I talked briefly about this at the Iwo Jima ceremony, in Milton, something like that, where we'd have a Milton Veterans Fund. And how we go about that is, you know, kind of model it on what we do in Randolph. The 501(c)(3) group down there, the Friends of the Senior Center, could add a second account, and we would designate that account as the Milton account, so we don't mix the two. Because, of course, the Randolph account has been created by the Randolph Veterans Organizations. So, but this gives an opportunity that if somebody comes to us and say, hey, I want to help the veterans, I'm willing to give $1,000. How can I do this? I've got a 501(c)(3) fund. I can say, here, make the check out to the Friends of the Senior Center, Milton, and we'll have an account there. And then, when people come to me, you know, I have a resource to tap into, other than digging into the town or looking for another source and saying, you know, how do we help this gentleman out?
I think it's a great idea. I think, you know, raising that awareness, and we can help do that. I think that, you know, Michael, you and Kevin could probably help shape that, if this board would be amenable to it.
I want to ask Kevin a question related to that. Kevin, have you referred anybody in a circumstance like that, someone who needs a small modest amount for whether it's a car or some other purpose? Have you referred them to the Milton Residents Fund? And Diane Viera, who was here earlier?
Yeah, when I came on board, we did call over to the church right next door, the...
First Parish.
First Parish, yes. You know, I did refer a couple people to that church directly because of that. Someone said, hey, there's the Milton Residents Fund, you know, see if they can help them out. You know, and I think that's great, but I want to kind of look at this as like, we want to have a fund just for veterans, only because I think at times, you know, the veterans are going to feel comfortable coming to me, you know, because I'm there to help them in other ways. I don't want to exclude anyone, but I think it's kind of one of the things that it's been a working model that I've really counted on in Randolph and has really helped out. I don't want to steer anyone away from if they can get assistance at the churches or some... but it's also to have more than one source, and I think it's, you know, diversification is not going to be a bad thing. If anything, it's going to give us more opportunities to help those in need.
Well, I was thinking, it sounds as though, you know, if Diane Viera and the trustees of the resident... of the directors of the Residents Fund are looking to possibly seek an increase from us in the amount that the Governor Stoughton Fund funds them every year, then possibly... I know she said it would be to help with her assistant, but possibly it could also cover additional requests from the veterans. What I heard you saying was that if people want to make a donation to it, an outside person wants to donate $500 to the veterans...
Anything like that.
Having the 501(c)(3) for that purpose might be reason to set up a separate fund.
Yeah.
Whereas the Governor Stoughton... somebody wouldn't normally donate to the Governor Stoughton, everyone's been passing on.
I think it's a great idea, in my opinion. I think it's a good idea. I think having that separate fund, I think, you know, the veterans feel very comfortable with you, working directly with you, Kevin. I think that they, you know, obviously have certain needs that you can relate to, having been... being a veteran and also having spent a lot of time around people, you know, with different circumstances, and I think that... I think it could be a very justifiable case here, and I think that we should work that out.
And how would you propose to fund it, Kevin? With private donations?
Well, I've got an interesting idea on how we do this, and I've kind of worked out the details on that. Memorial Day down in Randolph, I've been looking to innovate again, and Randolph is kind of was a little bit stuck in a rut on how they did things. So, I kind of changed up things a little bit, and then one of the things we did was we held a Memorial Day fundraiser breakfast at Stetson Hall. I had a number of people come to me and say, okay, breakfast on Memorial Day? I said, well, yeah, we'll have them attend the ceremony, and then, you know, we'll feed everybody afterwards. It's kind of a natural, you know, bring people together, break bread. So, a couple people said, I don't think it'll work. And I said, well, give me a chance. Let me put it out there. it'll work. And I said, well, give me a chance. Let me put it out there. Let's see what the community does. We had a hundred and sixty people show up for breakfast. And we have a nonprofit catering group called All Are Welcome that operates out of Middleborough, where I live, that organized it, partially funded a piece of it to get it going. And then, what we do is we go to the Milton High School and to the Blue Hills Regional School, and we seek students, high school students who want to assist us on that day because they need community service projects. And this is a natural. So, we actually had twenty-five students show up on Memorial Day. Think about that. Not take off for the weekend, not go worth their friends, wherever they were, to help us serve breakfast to a hundred and sixty residents of Randolph. And it was a great, great thing. We packed the room. So, I've already talked to the people at the COA, and they would let us use the facility Veterans Day morning. So, we would have the breakfast from like eight-thirty to ten-thirty. And then, after that, eleven o'clock, everybody goes over to Town Hall, and we have the ceremony.
That's a great idea. I think also, you know, we've been very fortunate to have, you know, Pat Flaherty, who's one of the coaches in the football team at Milton High, he organizes every year for Thanksgiving to do a big breakfast.
Yep.
And, you know, I think that this community really steps up when needed. And I think this is something that, I think it's a great idea. And you get a lot of, a lot of interest in it, I believe.
Yeah, you know, we set a reasonable price, you know, seven or eight dollars for breakfast. The breakfast we served down in Randolph was, you know, the basic coffee, juice, tea, eggs, bacon sausage, pancakes. And because we have such a great setup at COA, I mean, that kitchen, I got to tell you, every day I go in there to kind of heat my little lunch and, you know, I'm taking the leftovers from home. It's an amazing kitchen. I mean, everything is there. And of course, Mary Ann and her girls do a veterans luncheon right around Veterans Day. And they bring all the veterans in and serve a great meal there. They had a spring function there, too. It's just set up perfectly. So, I think we could fill that room with people who want to come in and donate and wouldn't mind paying, you know, seven, eight dollars, whatever, for breakfast. We get a hundred and fifty people. There's the start for our fund right there. And that would like be the start money for the fund. And we would build on it from there.
And would the breakfast be open just to veterans, or can they bring a spouse?
Anybody, you would, you open to the public.
Yeah.
Open to the public. Hey, it's two hours. If we work this right, we could rotate people in and out. We could fill that room twice, maybe, you know. I'm willing to go for it. And the, I've talked to the catering group, and in full disclosure, my wife is the actual person who runs the catering group. She's been doing this for five years. She's a total volunteer. She seeks no pay, nor does she ever have been paid. And she's been doing this for five years in Middleborough. And she does all kinds of functions. So, she did the one for Randolph, and we fed and successfully filled the room with a hundred and sixty people all who got breakfast.
That's great.
I just want to make up one final point is that, as you know, Kevin, we've been at war for sixteen years. And as you sit in this room before us tonight, there are sons and daughters of Milton parents around this world.
Yep.
Serving, protecting this nation. And unfortunately, your job is not going to get any easier because we've had hundreds upon thousands of sons and daughters who have served this country.
Half a million right now.
That's correct.
In those fifteen years.
And just as we saw in our friend Dan McGoon, when he started the Mass Fallen Heroes to create a memorial, their work will live on for some time, and just the support they're giving veterans coming home today. So, I think it's a great idea. And I think your commitment to veterans in this town is a wonderful thing. And I hope it's a very successful event, and I think it'll be great.
Yeah, I know. I mean, I want to try to make this an annual event with Veterans Day if we can, because I think it's a perfect thing to do. You know, I got to say, I've never been more welcome in a community I didn't live in. But I'm now a part of this community. People see me, and they recognize me. They say, hey, you're that guy from the veterans thing, right? You know, it's like, yeah. You know, and I'm not in either Milton. I'm somewhere else. You know, I'm down in Quincy or something. And people just see me, and they know me. So, I'm becoming a part of the community, and it's awesome. It's really awesome. I go to work every day. It's like, this is my reward. I, you know, I want the paycheck, believe me, the two and a half percent raise I got, I'm thinking. You know, but, but the reward is-
Full disclosure.
Yeah. The reward, it's public, it's public knowledge. The reward is the effect I have. Now, and just an example of what we, what we do, so you know how well this works. We have a network of like a hundred and fifty other, so, veterans agents, Massachusetts. I'm sitting in my office. A veteran came to see me, and he says, he goes, I'm okay. I'm doing okay. I got, you know, I got a little pension. I said, okay, what's up? Well, I need an electric wheelchair. You know, this guy's like, you know, eighty, and he's trying to get around. He goes halfway through the day, you know, my arms are worn out. I can't go anywhere. I said, okay. So, I have these other veterans agents. We have a network. And I go on that net, and I put out electric wheelchair, need it for a vet. Anyone can help thing. So, we're talking. Sitting there, all of a sudden, my email goes, bing. And I reach over, and the guy in Burlington goes, yeah, new electric wheelchair, only used twice. Come and get it. So, I turn to him, and I say, oh, can you wait till Tuesday? He's like, why? I go, I have an electric wheelchair for you. And we were able to drive up to Burlington, pick it up, and bring it to the veterans' house.
That's great.
It's like hitting a home run.
It is.
It was just like, I went home that day. I was like, huh. I was like, okay, what can I accomplish, right?
Well, Kevin, we appreciate you coming in and giving us an update. And certainly, we have some stuff to follow up on with the chair.
Sure.
And, and I think that this sounds like a great idea, having a breakfast and also creating a 501(c)(3) to have a veterans' fund, so that you can meet the needs of some of our needy veterans in town. And it's clear that your passion does speak, and we appreciate it. And you know that. And I think-
No, I do.
We're going to work well together for a very long time. And our veterans deserve people like you serving them. So, thank you.
I've got a couple more comments.
Oh, sure. Mike gave me a renewal letter, so I was very pleased with that.
Okay, so, on the issue of the breakfast, having it at the Council on Aging, I think, is the right location for it.
Sure.
The problem that potentially you could run into is, we were lucky this year, at Memorial Day, the rain held off. A year ago, it didn't, and we had to have the event in the Council on Aging. So, if you've got a breakfast, and then you're going to pull all the tables out and set up all the chairs for an event, that's, you know, logistically impossible to do. What I suggested a year ago when that happened, and we had to move the Memorial Day event indoors, was that we tried to see if we could use one of the churches, whether it's the First Congregation or the First Parish, to have the ceremony.
Okay.
And I did speak with Reverend Allen last year at that time. Unfortunately, we didn't connect in time because he was willing to give that, you know, to allow the town to possibly have the service at the church rather than at the Council on Aging. The churches are bigger. They can fit more people in a standing room only at the COA-
Great idea.
For the event. Anyway, and there's really no room for the high school band. So, I think, Kevin, if you, in order to go forward with that, we'd need a rain backup for the Veterans Day event.
Contingency plan.
Yeah. So, I think we would need to reach out to the churches to really try to line that up in order to be able to go forward with the plans for the breakfast because as important as the breakfast would be, the event is, you know, is so important. We wouldn't want that to, you have to be postponed till later in the afternoon or something because you always might have it at eleven in the morning. So-
The toughest thing is if we're dedicating a chair inside the front.
Yeah.
You can't have it in the front. We held it on the steps of Town Hall in Randolph. And we would probably do something similar like that. The ceremony, the chair would take place. And then, we had the building gentleman move it inside and set it up. And, you know, it was ready to go. So, yeah, definitely. I mean, you know, we'll be closely monitoring the weather. It is November. We do live in New England.
It is. But I'm suggesting that we would contact the churches now to have a-
Oh, yeah, as a plan.
Just to find out if they'd still, in the case of First Congregation, if they'd still be willing to host it there, if not the First Parish. At least have that as a contingency arrangement set up.
Sure. No problem at all. I think, I think that's forward-thinking. I'd much rather be proactive than reactive.
I think both would. I think either one of them would be better.
Just, and just for clarification, the 501(c)(3) is already set up in Randolph. We would not be creating a brand-new 501(c)(3). We'd just be asking them to administer a second account, which makes it much easier. Because I don't know if you've ever gone through the process of establishing a 501(c)(3). My wife did. It was, it was like a torture.
So, have you looked into that, whether Randolph is willing to do that, to Milton join us, join them in that?
I spoke briefly to them, and they said, you know, we'd be more than happy to discuss it. You know, it doesn't seem like a big issue. Because all it is is opening a second account. Down here in Randolph, there's a bank that we just opened an account for the AMVets, and there's no cost for the account opening.
Yeah, although if the funds are payable to the Friends of the Randolph Council on Aging, that might, I, those are just some issues that I think we're going to have to look into.
When you make a donation, you pay to the Friends of the Senior Center Veterans Fund. That's how the check is made out. It doesn't go to the actual Senior Center. It goes to the fund, which is set up in a bank account. So, we would have Friends of the Veterans Center Milton account. That's how it would be. So, it would be definitely separate. There would be no mixing of the funds. And we would make sure that, you know, anything that was donated for Milton went to the Milton account. I'd be very clear about that.
Okay, yeah. So, we get all the paperwork right on that.
Well, some of these items, yeah, we can vet these items, certainly after.
Town council, town council.
Okay. And I know you've got a long agenda, so let me, let me get off your table, because I know you've all worked hard today. And, you know, I don't want to take up too much time. But I really appreciate your time and effort. Please let me know if you ever need anything. You know, I'm willing to be here as often as possible. My whole purpose is to make sure that we do things for the veterans and the community. That's my bottom line.
We appreciate it, Kevin. Thanks for coming in tonight.
No, thank you so much.
Can I say one more thing again?
Yep.
I'm always getting the last word in here.
Absolutely.
The work that Barbara Martin does as a conduit between Kevin and the Selectmen's Office and the Town Administrator's Office is yeoman's work. We saw the work that she did while Kevin was in Randolph on Memorial Day.
Memorial Day.
Absolutely.
Barbara is a stalwart in this effort, so.
No question.
At my house, my wife is fond of saying, do you want to talk to the guy in charge or the lady who knows what's going on? I'm seeing that again here at work.
That's great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thanks. Have a good night.
You too.
So, the next order of business on our agenda is a discussion and approval of our social media policy. Assistant Town Administrator Paige Eppolito has worked with Andy Waugh from Murphy, Hestumee, and Lahane to create a policy for our town employees. We have one before us. This is something we've talked about for a better part of over a year, going back last year. Katie?
Well, we've talked about it. I think we may have had an early draft of this before as the second one, that we have the vehicle use policy. We definitely had seen ones before, and I think it's been approved. I thought, I think they both still need some work, to tell you the truth.
I agree.
And the one big question I have regarding the social media policy is, it doesn't apply to boards and committees. And that's one of the things that we've been talking about.
I agree.
So, right now, and it probably makes, there may be good reason to exclude elected officials from it. Because, you know, we all, right now, it says this applies to all compensated positions, excluding elected officials and school employees. And elected officials do have to, we all do use social media and campaign. So, there probably is a good reason to exclude it. But all the appointed boards and committees, we may want to, whether it's a separate policy or incorporating that into here, I think we need to have some discussion about and think about.
I agree. I think that the boards and committees, that we're fortunate to have them serving as volunteers with us. But they, they serve in a role to advise us in many ways. And sometimes, you know, some of, some of the things that they do say may not be, you know, endorsed by, by our board or by potentially another elected board in town. So-
Or the committee they sit on themselves.
Yeah.
The committee they sit on.
Sure. And I think, so that's, that's one of the things that I think we need to, we need to vet. And then, you know, the school department as well, you know, I'm sure they, do they have their own policy, Michael?
Yeah, so I talked to Paige Eppolito. She's been here almost eighteen months.
Yep.
And all of the policies that she's put forth have just been on the town side.
Sure.
The schools have their own policies and procedures with respect to sexual harassment and vehicle use policy and other things. So, this is exclusively town-side stuff. Wouldn't include school officials or school committee.
Good. Why don't we, why don't we defer this, then, I think, to another meeting down the road? It's something that I'd like to get going on, though. I don't want this to drag into the fall. I think, you know, I think that's something that we should be able to address by the end of the summer at the very latest. You know, I think that there's a lot of things that are coming up. There have been some instances of late where we have had employees comment on, on certain issues town-wide that I think, you know, need to be addressed. And I think that this policy would help us, I think, you know, hold all employees accountable, as they should be, you know. And I think that they have an obligation, as they work for the town of Milton, to represent the town of Milton. So, let's defer this. We'll look at putting it on a future agenda. Why don't we all mark it up? Because I know that we all have some comments.
Okay.
And maybe we can, we can discuss it either next meeting or the meeting after. And then, maybe come to, to an agreement on it.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of cleanup, too. That, for instance, in the definition section, there's some, some of the actual policies in the definitions. And I think we want to pull it out of there and call it out in a separate section.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so, it's great. So, item number ten, discussion approval of vehicle use policy. Again, Assistant Town Administrator Paige Eppolito and Andy Waugh worked on this with that Town Administrator, Michael Dennehy. Mike, do you want to give us an update on this?
Yeah, so, just, we're, we're in the process of hiring. We've hired a new DPW director. We'll be bringing a new mechanic in. I think a lot of the stuff that goes on in the town nowadays, we get complaints from time to time that someone may see a vehicle in Hyde Park or down in Stoughton. And understandably, there are times when a vehicle has to leave the town to pick up material somewhere else. But we, we need a policy in place where, where there is a standard set of rules that the union is aware of, and all department heads have the ability to enforce. So, that those certain circumstances, when, when a vehicle, which is, which is a taxpayer asset, may, may not be where it's supposed to be, that there are some, there's some measures in place and processes and procedures we can follow on the town side to make sure that these vehicles are being used appropriately.
Okay.
Can I comment on this one?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, we talked a little bit today on this one. So, my thoughts, I have some significant thoughts as far as particularly the police chief and the fire chief, both police operations and fire operations. It's not so much the vehicle. It's the equipment, the communications, the things they carry with them, their ability to command and control from instant, from the second you get into it. There are things in here that clearly would hinder public safety, at least especially on the police side. Some of the things, the restrictions, where they could go. I mean, it's, it's not uncommon on a dime today for particularly investigators to be moving very quickly in a very wide span. And there's some restrictive things in there, particularly like crossing and, you know, those things happen. We do have crimes where perpetrators perpetrate a crime, they head right into another state. So, I'd like, I would just ask if you would maybe meet with Chief Grant and Chief King and get their perspective on this from there. And I'll mark my own comments up on it as well. One of the other things that this really doesn't make reference to is two things. We have volunteers. We have auxiliary policemen, auxiliary families. They drive, they're not employees, but they're volunteers. Fallon Ambulance may, are medics, are a private entity, but they are an integral part of our public safety triangle. And it's not uncommon, one of them will want us to drive each other's vehicles. And the bigger one, which is the Board of Selectmen previously voted and passed, is under 48G, which is the state's largest mutual aid pact, which, just on the police side, I don't even know how big Chief Grant's is. It talks exclusively, which is the reason the state statute was created, for sharing of resources, equipment, vehicles, personnel, all. It would not be uncommon, particularly when we were at the marathon, but sharing people, it was just, it just happens. So, those are things that exist, the general orders within the police town that address this. I just think would really clean this up a lot and make it more functional for both entities especially. That's all. But I understand the parts you like, the part about, I can understand the normal working hours and the need for certain, but particularly in the public safety, as you know, coming from city, Commissioner Evans, Commissioner Finch, Chief Gross, Superintendent, it's a twenty-four-seven, they're constantly, they're constantly, so I really want to see it embrace what they actually do.
Yeah, and that communications piece is huge. As they're driving to a scene, they're working, communicating to their staff, so.
Well, to that point, is any of this, because there's a section in here that talks about if something is covered in a collective bargaining agreement regarding vehicle use, then that governs. And I'm not sure that any of this isn't collective bargaining agreements.
In, in respectable, especially police chiefs, I would be willing to bet mass chiefs, mass fire chiefs as well, there's, there's case law, even to the point of parrot, as far as a police chief or a fire chief's ability and their use.
Yeah, I don't mean the chiefs. I mean, I mean the sergeants.
Yeah, so, well, there's general orders, and that's why I said, rather, mirror the two. Because you're going to end up having conflicting orders. And a general order, which is approved by the Board of Selectmen on the rules and regs, is the most restrictive thing that they work under.
Okay.
To your point, Katie, I'll make sure that it's in a collective bargain agreement is referenced in this, so that it supersedes.
And so, Michael, has, you know, the Assistant Town Administrator spoken to other towns as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
A lot of diligence involved with that.
Good, good. Because I know that some vary, you know.
I have just a couple of big questions. A lot of this is more cleanup. But there's a reference in either an automobile allowance for somebody who's using their own personal vehicle. Is that really happening? Do we?
No. No, that's not happening. I was asked that question during a recent interview, actually.
Because I'm wondering whether that should even come out. If we're not doing that now, whether that could even be deleted. It seemed to me that the people who are using the cars or who are doing town business using vehicles are all using town cars.
No, I think there's one. Well, it may not be, there was definitely one employee in this building that was getting mileage for a while moving. It may not be the case either, but we could talk about that after. But there was definitely one. So, that's why I didn't, I didn't jump when I saw that, because I knew that, that one.
Yeah, I just, I just didn't know if it really applied or if it could be deleted. And then, there's a section here about people who have access to twenty-four-hour vehicle use, which I'm guessing is the police and fire chiefs, possibly the town administrator. Are there, do we know the universe of people that that applies to? It seemed to be very small.
Yeah, Paige has a list of it. I think, I think it might be the three vehicles and maybe some of the command staff with the police and fire.
Okay.
But it's very limited.
My final question is on this action. I don't think we have such a person, the final page, Corporation Chief Counsel on an accident.
Yeah, that looked like that was copied from another communities.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't we defer this again, just like we did with the social media policy? We've all had a chance to look at it. We have some comments. I think that let's fine-tune this and make it relevant. As Richard said, you know, especially, you know, keeping in mind public safety and what their needs are. So, why don't we come back to that again at a future meeting sometime before the end of the summer again, so that we can start fresh around Labor Day?
I agree. And to that point, I wonder whether we should look into whether other towns have a separate policy just for police and fire. Because some of the things that would apply to them wouldn't necessarily apply to a member of the-
Correct.
The Health Department or the Building Department.
It'd be definitely worthwhile looking into that.
Yeah.
So, if we could maybe ask Paige to, to talk to some other departments, that'd be great. Okay, item number eleven, under Henry's, the MOA Amendment Approval. So, at our April twelfth meeting, there was an amendment made to the Henry's Memory Amendment Agreement to delay the deadline of demolition to July fifteenth in order for additional questions from the Conservation Commission to be answered. So, since we still have some of those questions[1719.66] So, since we still have some of those questions that are out there, we want to extend this deadline, because it looks as if that July 15th is not going to be right work, so.
Please, John.
We have, do you want to call?
We, yeah.
Perfect timing, John Flynn, our town council.
Perfect timing. If you could come up for a second, John.
John, we're just, item number 11 on our agenda is the Henry's M O A. Amendment. So, we're looking to obviously extend that from July 15th to another date, if you wouldn't mind just giving us an update.
Do you want me to just, I spoke with Mike Lee this afternoon. We had, I've been out of town for a few days and just looked at this this afternoon, and I'm not sure that we actually need to do anything on this at the moment, and John really has been a part of the conversation on this recently, but we, in a conversation that Emily and Mike and I had about Henry's a few days ago, we thought that July, we knew this July 15th deadline was coming up, and we thought it applied to the demolition. It really applies to the permits being issued by the Concom and the Planning Board, so all of those deadlines have now been met. The appeal periods have run, the special permit's been issued, the next phase has really begun, which relates to the conveyance. So, it appears there's really not anything that we need to extend at this point. We have an agreement that says we have to promptly convey, doesn't define promptly, but that could be, depending on what the circumstances are and the facts of any given case, promptly could mean something in one case and something different in another case. So, it appears that this may, yeah, this was late this afternoon.
I wasn't aware of that update. Okay, so, that's fine. So, we can negate this?
Well, I was just, I'd like John's interpretation of it. Katie and I were in agreement this afternoon that a lot of this stuff has been executed, and that the July 15th deadline is not needed to be extended here tonight, because the permits have been issued, and if you walk through with the order of condition and the appeal period and all that stuff has been, has taken place. We just wanted to make sure, a week ago, that we crossed our Ts and dotted our Is, and if these things weren't followed through on, that we had the extension past July 15. So, it was our interpretation today that we may have met all of those, and that this, in fact, may not have to be extended tonight.
I think that's correct. All the preconditions to conveyance have been met, and that was the reason for the possibility of an extension. Now, they're going to have to do their title work and everything and accept a deed from the town. Yes, I believe you are correct.
Great. Thank you, John.
Okay.
Sorry about that, Chair.
Oh, that's fine, that's fine, that's good news. We'll take good news on this one any day of the week. Thank you, John. Okay, then we're going to move on to a discussion about our October special town meeting articles. You know, one of the things that I'd like to discuss is a noise bylaw. I think that, you know, we've received some complaints from some residents where work has been being done early in the morning in various parts of the town, you know, whether it be a Saturday or Sunday or on a holiday, and I think that it's, it would be very sensible for us to look to draft a bylaw and put it before town meeting this October.
So, my one concern, and I agree with you, my one concern is the most recent, this thought where Alex Whiteside made a thought that maybe we should have the police enforce a noise bylaw. And I just think, I think you might find Chief King in agreement with this, because he was pretty, he was of great help on the last one, the one we created, is you're walking on fragile ground, you start talking about making a police matter noise, or, you know, making a crime, because the only way the police can enforce something, even the town bylaws under Chapter 6, those are things that are also enforceable criminally in court. And a criminal violation is much different than a zoning violation, and making that determination, I think it's a much better thing to have an inspectional services.
Well, I think that that's what our attention would be, especially now that we're going to be hiring a code enforcement officer as well.
That's just like the city inspectional services, noise viol, you know, it's.
Yeah, I think that's the route that we'd like to go down, you know, to have to call the police and take them off of a shift and would be.
I think the, I agree with you, but I think the concern the Planning Board had in mind was that a lot of these things happen on weekends.
Right, I get that, too.
And Joe Prondak is, unlike the police who are 24/7, his department's not working on the weekend.
The only issue, and my only, again, my thought is, it's like using a sledgehammer to kill a fly, where, you know, a code enforcement officer, that's why we're having one, these are code enforcement, and I think just because you want to cover that 24/7, I'm sure, just as the police do with public health and with inspectional services, now Joe Prondak, there are things that do happen on weekends, we're seeing the issue ongoing on a brush, that there's a great deal of communications, and obviously, the police, when they go to things that are noise, now they've rise to a level of disturbance, they're going to end it anyway. They know they're going to, oh, the noise bylaw, I just, I'd be anxious to see what John thinks, and, well, both John, Chief King, but also town council, as far as making our noise ordinance forced by the police department, I just, I think we're going a little too far there. And we've got a route to go, I mean, and especially with the hiring of the corner force officer, that's something in the highway, we can look at the 24, just, you know, they're going to have to go to fires and, you know, things where we're bored, that's just part of their job sometimes when they're on call, so.
Right.
And it's not, it's not like the noise things happen that often, it's not.
Yeah, well, I don't think it's intended to hurt the guy that's out working on his house. It's more about the developer that's coming in and working at 6:30 in the morning on a Sunday morning, as opposed to, you know, any one of us who, you know, getting some yard work done.
Right, I get that, I get that.
So, I think that we need to vet that. I think that that's something we need to discuss and figure out whether or not it's feasible to put in front of town meeting.
And I think related to what you just said, David, is the issue of, should it apply to homeowners doing their own projects or just contractors? Because when we had this come to town meeting two years ago, there was a lot of pushback from the floor of town meeting, that this shouldn't apply to somebody who wants to do some work on their own property.
Correct.
So, would we be looking at, and I think what Tom Hurley and Joe Prondak were trying to work on last year, and I don't know how far that ever got in terms of a draft, but are we looking at just contract, outside contracts, who might be hired by a homeowner or a development project, and having it apply only in those cases versus somebody doing their own work?
I haven't seen it for a long time. Go ahead, David.
That would be my intention, you know, I don't think that, you know, I think people are pretty reasonable in their own neighborhood for cutting a lawn or putting a leaf blower on, and I think that, you know, neighbors can talk to neighbors and say, you know, hey, by the way, I have a baby that's sleeping, and I think it can be very civil. I think more so it would be intended for contractors or businesses that come in on behalf of a resident during times that could be difficult, so.
Wasn't there some language in that last draft, something about decibels, though? Am I right, am I right?
There may have been.
They were talking decibels.
I thought they were talking decibels, and that's where you get into the.
Certain towns have that, they have a.
It's hard to enforce.
It is hard to enforce, you know, I can tell you from my time in Westwood, they had, there's a decibel reader for the actual football stadium for just their loudspeaker, and it can only be used during certain times, it can't reach a certain level, because it interrupts the neighborhood and so forth. So, there are towns that do take that serious, and I think that that would be worthwhile, again, to look into from other towns and their perspectives. I know there are some towns that take this really serious. I think Brookline doesn't allow leaf blowers at certain times, and you can be fined, you know, so it's, it can be really, really tough, but I think that we could probably find something that's suitable and amenable to what our residents want, you know. I think that we don't want to put anything forward that our residents don't want. I think that that's our job, so.
And that's where the fine line, when you start putting the language about the decibels, is it, you know, Richard Wells working in his own yard, or is it, you know, John Jones' you know, Company Inc. coming and doing whatever? And it's funny, we do see more of it. I mean, I saw contractors working yesterday, it's the 4th of July, and like, they're all working, just.
Yeah, I think the Planning Board was focusing more on, they've offered to help those with us, and they seem to be focused on just the outside contractors. So, it sounds like we're on the same page with them, which is good.
Would we be legal, would we be on firm ground, though, if we tried to create a bylaw that had decibels that only applied to contractors and not to citizens? I just, I'm just thinking, and noise is, sometimes noise is tough to, it's definitely going into an area that's not as, it's why in.
I think we probably have to focus on timeframe, time versus that, you know, I think to start, you know, you can always amend it later if you had to, but I think that going on timeframe, you know, would probably be our most sensible way to do it.
It sounds like we should get whatever draft Joe Prondak and Tom Hurley were working on last year as the starting point.
Can you get a copy of that sent to us?
Yep. While on the subject of the code enforcement officer, in my travels since the override has passed, it's overwhelmingly the majority of people, it's issues that have come up to me. I was at the council on aging last Thursday at their breakfast, and four different individuals came up to me with four different situations where they, they want punitive measures, they want, you know, how high your grass can be, you know, what your property needs to look like, and there's certain properties in this town are visited, with some of you, that, you know, it's an eyesore for the neighborhood, and people are looking for this code enforcement officer to have some teeth, if you will, with an article, possibly in October's town meeting, not necessarily, you know, noise is one thing, but, you know, what their house looks like and how their yard is kept, and, you know, stuff like that. It's what I'm hearing loud and clear.
Basically acceptable measures of enforcement.
Right.
And I think we heard that, especially in a couple of neighborhoods in town, they were really pleading for this.
Well, we should probably draft something up then, you know.
Yeah, I agree.
I think so.
And we could work with Joe Prondak of the language, and it gets, you don't want to be out there chasing butterflies either, right? I mean, is it, is my grass 11 inches high or is it 12 inches high, and stuff like that, but just measures that are put in place to give the code enforcement officer some teeth, so that he's not, he's not just going out to cases that he really doesn't have any enforcement.
Good.
Have you already started? Have they already started to advertise for that one or no?
Yeah, that, there's four jobs that have been advertised so far on the town side.
Okay. The marijuana one that we've talked about, unless anyone has still finished on noise. I think we'll have a draft ready for the next meeting on July 24th. We're going to set up a little group meeting next week with one of John Flynn's colleagues to help on that, and as we're all hearing, there's a lot of action up at the legislature, but the House and Senate seem to still be on different pages, was the last that I heard on it, so whether there'll be something to replace what currently exists, we'll probably know fairly soon. I wanted to suggest that the board consider something, and is an article for the fall town meeting. Now that we're going to be going to a five-member board, there's been, there was a lot of talk in the last few months, specifically in the election regarding the five-member question about health insurance and elected officials being eligible for health insurance. Would the board be interested in submitting an article that, and I haven't done the research on it yet, but prohibiting that, so that elected officials, even the ones like our board, where they're paid a small stipend, would be ineligible for health insurance? Especially, we're going to be adding two new elected officials, and most elected officials don't use that, but in the past, some have, and it can be expensive, a family plan or an individual plan. Is that something we would be willing to put forward?
Yeah, you know, I think that, you know, we just did pass an override, and it's prudent for us to be fiscally responsible, and, you know, obviously, it's a privilege to be able to serve our residents on a daily basis, you know, basically as a volunteer, and I think that a lot of people who do work on boards and committees put in countless hours on those boards and committees without having the opportunity as well, while there's others who spend not so much time. I mean, I don't know if there, is there a specific amount of time to qualify you? Is it 20 hours per week that qualifies you? You know, that's one of the questions I'd have, to be eligible for health benefits, but I think that I would be supportive of that. I would be supportive of, because I believe, you know, if it's, if it's a family, I think it's in upwards of $16,000, $17,000 that it costs the town, you know. I don't think anybody on this board takes health insurance right now from.
I take it from the town, but as a retiree.
Yeah, but as a retiree, which you're entitled to, right, that's a different, different.
Is there any other board besides us that, does the school committee get it?
No, it's the Board of Assessors and the Board of Selectmen, because it's only the ones that are paid a stipend.
Okay.
Is there any?
So, it's only those two boards?
Yes.
Is anyone taking it now?
I'm not currently positive, but now, at least a year or two ago, that I thought there was, but.
Can we take some time to think about it?
Oh, yeah, I'm just putting it out as a discussion topic.
Yeah, I think that we ought to run the numbers, too, and see what it would be, potentially it could be, you know, because I think that, you know, if it all of a sudden became a total of, you know, 50, 60, $70,000, that's a lot of money, you know. So, let's think about this. I think that's a, it's a great, great idea to talk about and potentially submit.
Okay. So, we'll continue it on the 24th?
Yes.
Okay.
I have one, I was talking to the town treasurer, who's looking towards whether we lean the stormwater, unpaid stormwater fees, and had a brief conversation with town council, and that would be something that would need to be presented as an article in the fall.
Where do we stand right now in terms of payment on the stormwater, Michael?
We have collected about $625,000 of the $718,000, so we're about a little above 85% collected.
Okay.
To date, yeah.
So, Mike, this would be for someone who hasn't paid the bill for the town to be able to attach a lien on their property?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
So, is that still being, is there still some research being done on that?
No, I believe, I believe it, in fact, has to be presented at town meeting and passed for it to become legal.
One question we might want to think about is that, there's only a handful of other towns, we were eighth or ninth, that adopted a stormwater fee system. What are the other towns doing? Are the others, are the others doing that that might be worth looking into?
I agree. I agree, and I had, I had brought up a subject of a 1% alcohol tax.
Oh, yeah.
To go, with all proceeds, to go to the Milton Substance Abuse Coalition. I don't know if that's palatable, you know, to people, since we've just had an override or not, but, you know, I'd really like feedback, I think, from residents on that, you know, just to see one way or the other, whether or not they'd be supportive of such an effort, because this is an epidemic. We have a police chief that has been very, a former police chief and a current police chief that have been very active statewide in fighting this epidemic, and I think that we have such a committed group of, I think, over 300 members now in this coalition, which is gaining steam, notoriety, and making a difference. And any way that we can support them, they're only as good as the support, the education they can provide, and that occurs by having some funds and money to be able to implement some of these educational programs to help these families. And so, this is one of the ways that I thought might be a viable way to help support them, and that would be strictly to anyone who went out to eat, it would be an added 1% tax on only the alcohol that they drank, and then also with the liquor stores and anybody who bought liquor in the Town of Milton. I don't know, you know, I think any bit does help, but I'd really be interested to get feedback from people on whether or not it is palatable during these times, but I think we need to continue to find ways to support the Substance Abuse Coalition, the great work that they're doing every day, to help the families that are in dire need every day. Somebody's faced with a tough challenge in deciding whether or not to take a risk with alcohol or drugs, and they're young kids, too. They're not, not just the 30-something-year-olds that we do have, or 40-year-olds or adults, they're kids who are in our high school and their middle schools, it's about education. So, you know, I'd like to, I'd like to continue to discuss this and find out whether it's feasible.
Do you know what, Boston never adopted it?
I don't know if they did that, but we can find out if they did that.
They did not.
They did not?
No, it was voted down by the city council.
Just in a follow-up to what you just said, David, I was going to mention this in the members' report, but last week I was invited and I attended Fallon Ambulance, our EMS provider, specifically Tim Fallon, the CEO, was recognized for, by Phoenix House, which is one of the largest rehabs in our area, it's right in Wallaston, for all they have done, not just on a local level, but on a state and a regional level, and he, Timmy, when he spoke, he specifically cited two people, you know one of them, David, very well, in this town, who just do so much, they both sit on the Mass Pack, both Christine Hamilton and Teddy Carroll, who have just done unbelievable work, 60,000 overdose deaths in the Commonwealth last year. That's more than the entire Vietnam War.
It's tragic, yeah.
And the truth of it is, when you listen to Governor Baker, he doesn't see it going down. He says continue to escalate up for another three years, and as you said, David, it's not so much the 30-year-old or the 25-year-old, not even the 19-year-old, it's the 10- and 12-year-old that's in the past, it's the middle school kid that we have to really work hard to protect, so when they get to that crossroad, and so, I'm open to any discussion we can have to do that, to try and, whether it's the 1%, whatever we can do to try and not, because this is not going to go away, and we have to continue to be diligent in this.
Yeah, thank you, and I think that we need to look outside the box, and this is one of the ways that we can, and so, you know, why don't we, you know, we can always put a poll out there, too, we can do a Facebook poll, we can maybe get some information out, you know, and just try to get some feedback. I think it's important to get a pulse in the community and where they stand on this, whether they'd be supportive of that, because I don't want to go down a road that they don't want, but I think that it's important for us to at least bring this subject up and take it very serious.
What do you think about asking the Chamber for their, Chamber of Commerce for their view as well?
That's a good idea.
We probably can guess what their view will be, but maybe give them an opportunity to weigh in.
Absolutely. I think it's a great idea. You know, I think that, you know, they're our partners of ours and I think that, you know, maybe we could bring it up as a topic of conversation at one of their future meetings. Any other discussion on the town meeting articles?
Can't think of any other that we, others that we were thinking of bringing forward, at least in the past year.
We do have a deadline date.
Yeah, August 7th.
Yep, which is, it's coming up pretty soon.
Do we have any citizen petition, anything that's been submitted? Do we know? Nothing?
Nothing yet.
A one-day town, municipal town meeting?
With the plaintiff, with the plaintiff's...
They had deferred some at spring. So they'll have plenty to talk about anyway, too. Okay, so we'll move on to a discussion on the Fair Housing Committee representative. The composition of the Fair Housing Committee stipulates that one member of the board will serve on it. Previously, Tom Hurley was our designee, but since he stepped down from the board, we need a new, new member. So I'm currently serving on the Pilot Committee and the Yulin-Rink Committee and have shown interest in, on the Capitol Committee to join that committee as well. So do you have any interest, Richard?
I'll do it if you want, yeah, that's fine.
Is there any money involved in it? No, no, is it, do they, do they just...
That came out wrong.
Not yet.
Do they disperse any money? I mean, I'm only thinking of the conflict from, what was the last, only because we give money to so many things, that's my only...
Do they? I thought they did have some kind of a budget.
Well, let's, when I say yes...
Bill Clark would...
Why don't we look at, yeah, we'll, we'll look through that, Michael, if we can look into that and then we can, we can follow up too with the clerk as well.
And speaking of Tom, we also have to replace him on the Affordable Housing Trust, which does have some money, but not very much.
It's very little.
Over time, we'll probably have more money to disperse, but...
That one, I, only because there's the possibility that could get money, I'm not saying, I just, anything in the world that I could have the fiduciary thing, I'd rather...
Well, we can talk about it.
Okay.
We'll fill these.
This one, this one I can definitely do. Let me say yes.
Great, great. We appreciate that. That's great. Okay, then we'll move along. We can, we can follow up on those as, on a future agenda item. Boards and committee appointments, the Fair Housing Committee. So we have a motion now?
It's the same one.
Yeah, in front of us.
So is Richard going to do it?
You want me to read that? Oh, go ahead, you can read it.
I thought you were...
He said he...
You said you definitely would.
I'll do it, yeah.
All right, then. Well, I'll move that we appoint Richard Wells as the Board of Selectmen's designee on the Fair Housing Committee to serve through July of 2018.
I'll second that. Do we have any discussion? Thank you for serving.
You're welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
More boards and committee appointments, Master Plan Implementation Committee.
I'm our representative on that one.
Could you make a motion?
I read it. So I'll make, I'll make a motion to appoint Elizabeth Miller of 15 Cape, you want me to do one at a time or you want me to do them all?
Do them all.
Okay. Elizabeth Miller of 15 Cape Cod Lane, Richard S. Burke of 617 Pleasant Street, Cheryl Taggias of 660 Canton Avenue, and Kathleen M. Connell of 42 Reeddale Road to the Master Plan Implementation Committee to serve through July of 2018.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion? Thank you for your service, Katie. All in favor?
Aye.
Under number 16, the Town Administrator's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, thank you for having me tonight. Another busy fortnight. One of the highlights was I briefly touched upon it, that I'd gone over to the breakfast council on aging that Marion Sullivan and specifically Alice Mercer put on. I used to read to my children's kindergarten and first grade, there's more energy over at the Council on Aging than there actually is in some of our elementary schools. It's, it's, it's an in-tuned group that, a vibrant group of people that really know what's going on in the town. They ask very good questions. They expect very good answers. It was a pleasure to be over there. We lasted about an hour and a half. There were a lot of very specific issues that were talked about. Obviously, it was after the override, but I think people, they, as a group, they were very, very welcome to the town moving forward. And I can't thank them enough for having me over there. It was, it was very uplifting and the knowledge in that room that, you know, they've forgotten on their pinky what I'll ever know in this town. So it was, it was very nice to have, have me over there.
You'll be there one day.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, yeah. I have someone signed up at Home Inc., so my name's on the list.
See you go. You're preparing.
But no, it was, it was a great day over there and I really appreciate it. Additionally, there were some flowers that were put outside over the weekend. I have to thank Driscoll Landscaping. If you see it on the front entrance, it's really, really nice, the work that they did. So just an acknowledgement to Driscoll Landscaping for the work that they did over there.
John does a lot of good things for this town.
Yeah. DPW Yard Waste Collections finished for the fiscal year. Roughly 2,600 tons of yard waste did not end up in a landfill, which is good news. From a taxpayer perspective, that saved about $100,000 in, in costs, the delta on, on composting that, the tipping fees for that and what you would, would have to pay a solid way. So I did see yard waste out this week. I apologize to people that, I received my recycling and yard waste calendar in the mail today. We're not picking up yard waste this week. We're picking it up next week, so that stuff that's there will unfortunately have to stay on the curb. But it, I appreciate all those people that are putting that out properly in the proper stream. Again, it was $100,000 in last year's tax dollars that we saved by, by people putting it out the right way. We talked about this very quickly at the last board meeting, but the LED, we've ordered the 3,300-plus lights. There's a 10-week lead time. We've piggybacked on the state contract. It's a very good price. Jack Calabro should have the RFP for installation done at the end of next week. So in a perfect world, we'll receive the material at the same time that we award the contract for installation. And about three to five weeks after that, we should have the entire town done and start maximizing the utility costs, the savings from that. So hats off to Jack. It wasn't really in his wheelhouse to put an RFP together, but he's done a really good job putting it together, so. They have also the IT team and Alan Bishop, as well as John Thompson, have done a very good job of, if you go on the town's main website, you'll see Report a Problem up on the top. It gives the resident or constituent or visitor to our town the ability to give a little bit more detail into what basic town service, you know, missed trash, any type of thing, pothole, dead animal, litter basket, just uncleanliness. It, it gives more specifics. There's a geocoded map. You can identify a location. You can upload a picture and add it to that. So they've been working hard to try to update that. So I, I welcome anyone that, that uses that system now to, to take a look. It's, it's more vibrant and dynamic than it was before. So we're still working our way through that. Selectman Wells had talked about the override positions from the town side. There's currently four posted on the MMA. We're continuing to get job descriptions in from the department heads to write them. In a perfect world, we'd have all, all of these positions interviewed, filled, trained, and on the street by, by Labor Day. Obviously, the, the police department and the, and the civil service exam is a little different. They have to wait till August results.
A new list.
Yeah, for a new list. And then by the time they get them through the academy and on the street, they're probably looking at like May before we see those two patrolmen. The other stuff seems to be going very well. A lot of, lot of good qualified applicants coming through so far. Paige Apelito gives me an update every day, so there's, there's a lot of people looking to work for the town. A lot of residents in the town as well applying, so.
Great.
Nick, the only other thing I have is, is the major construction project that starts next Monday on Adam Street. It will be an inconvenience. There's no two ways around it. It's, it's a major thoroughfare in and out of our town. They've done a lot of good outreach to the Chamber of Commerce and I think it's a pretty well-thought-out plan. It, it will start Monday from Church Street to the Quincy Line. They're going to do during normal business hours. From Church Street to Granite Ave, they're going to do at night from 7:00 PM to 5:00 AM.
Great.
Just so as to not inconvenience some of the businesses down there during the day.
What do you think it's done by, completed?
It will run into the fall. There will be times in the eastbound lane of Adam Street will be closed, but the westbound lane should be open more often than not. But Ava Zeller and Sons, who I worked with in Boston a lot, they're the contractor. They do very good work. We expect the job site to be clean at the end of every day and safe, so the people that will be using services in the square will, will not be as inconvenienced. They will be replacing the water mains on Washington and Rockwell while they're in there, so.
I see they've already got the signboards are already up on Washington. I saw them there this week.
Okay.
They've already got them there.
Yeah. So I ask for patience. There, there is a way to reach out to the town. It's E-N-G-A-D-M-I-N@townofmilton.org. You can subscribe to the notifications and also report any, any type of activity that, you know, needs, needs attention around the clock. So I ask for forgiveness in advance. It's something that needs to be done. Their old drains and the water lines need to be cleaned and lined, so.
Benefit is long-term. You just don't see it so much, but in the end you get it.
Yeah, and in the end, the, you know, that, that roadway is, is...
Oh, deplorable, terrible.
It's, it's one of the worst in town, so we will see an improved, hopefully mid-fall we'll see a brand-new street down there, as well as Washington and Rockwell have, so.
Great.
All right.
Good news. Thanks for that update. Thanks for the continued great work.
Thanks.
So Chair's report. Just first off, I want to extend my deepest sympathies and condolences to Cheryl Flightman, the passing of her mother, Vivian Flightman. You know, Cheryl's been very active in this town for a long time, was a long-time town meeting member and Vivian was active as well. And so for that, I just wanted to extend that on behalf of our board. Difficult time for her. And then next I want to, and I'll let you speak to this, Richard, but I just want to congratulate the, the committee for...
A Milton Music Fest, yeah.
Yeah, Milton Music Fest. You know, Lynda Lee Sheridan, Brian Kelly and, and all the volunteers that helped put on a tremendous show. I went up there with my family and saw the fireworks and saw a lot of good, a lot of good families from, from all parts of Milton with, with young children and teenagers. It was just a nice community gathering and it was very well-done in the fireworks show. I had to have a laugh. I, we were down in the Cape and I said to my wife, "Wald, do you want to go see the fireworks?" She said, "I don't need to go see the fireworks. I already saw the Milton ones. I doubt they can top those." So, so kudos.
Saved Brian Kelly's day.
Yeah, they were, they were absolutely sensational. So, so I'll let you speak to that.
I just, first, I want to thank, Michael, and all the departments. Just nearly every department helped out in some way to make this happen. We had well over 3,000 people over the two days and it's just a great event for the town. It says a lot about the town. Like you said, a lot of families, young and old, they come by shuttle bus, by, they're there at 3:00, 2:00. They just, you know, and there's something for everyone there. I do give Brian, Lynda Lee, Kathy Fagan, Glenn, Eric Mill, there's so many people that work on it, just, it's a labor of love and I'm just glad to be a part of it and I, it'll get bigger and better every year, so that's a good thing. It was a good fireworks show, though. I give it, I was having my doubts. It was a very good one this year. I went to Weymouth the other night, wasn't even close. It was good, but that was a good one.
Katie?
I just wanted to give a very brief update on the Master Plan Implementation Committee's last meeting in June. And we'll have more at our meeting on July 24th because we have a meeting the week before that. But the main thing that we're working on right now is the WRF study that the MAPC is helping us out with. And the two pieces of it are the, and David, you know this, Richard is probably not as familiar with it, but the waterfront and the dock for the, for the crew. And the second phase is the Milton Village zoning and looking at the possibility of bringing mixed-use commercial and retail into the Milton Village. So right now, MAPC is working on their schedule. Bill Clark is working with them, as well as our newest member, Taper Keely, has also kind of been assigned to help with the plan and make sure it's on track for the summer. There will be a site walk. That hasn't been announced yet as to when it will be, but there'll be a lot of, there'll be some meetings with some of the stakeholders and we'll be inviting some of the elected boards and other people to come to some of those meetings. So I think at our next meeting in July, we'll have a, we'll probably at that point have this scheduled more in place.
Can I just ask a follow-up question? So when we were at town meeting, there was a, wasn't there a visual display? Was it, was it showed the Gaius, Taggias who put that up on, it might have been during the...
She gave a report on the, what the committee's doing, yes.
Right, and she showed a section of, is there a section of property behind the town landing that is town-owned, that the town owns?
Behind the town.
All right, so where the boats are. When you go up to the, when you, when you leave the, when you butt, say, between the phone company building and the parking lot over towards, is there property that's privately owned or...
Yes, well, this town...
Parks Department property there.
It's there.
Yeah, it's the, I think you're talking about the captain, what they call the captain's landing, the, the area that was right near the end of the, where the parking area is.
And obviously, as you, like, I'm, I'm, I've said this, I think I said this a few years ago in a meeting, the DePonce River and the DePonce River Basin is clearly a jewel in this town. And if we ever get the chance to develop this, we really stand the potential of having a new se, I mean, look what the Boston waterfront, the Four Point Channel and Seaport became. Not, nothing to that, but it's definitely a jewel. And I think anything we can do to enhance down there and make it better, it's just going to be one more section of town that, whether it's mixed-use, new families or whatever, over 50,500, whatever, I think it's, it's definitely a next positive step forward. You know, we saw good things come out with the Ice House in Carberry. I think this is just one more way to, you know, Crew is something that's not going to get any smaller.
No.
It's going to continue to get bigger.
No.
Great.
So we'll have, it's, it's, that's been the major topic that the committee has been working on. We're working on some of the low-hanging fruit as well and talked a little bit about transportation and housing issues, but most of our work so far has been on the WRF area because this issue came forward with the Crew Dock and then expanded into looking at mixed-use zoning for the area. So, and there's also been some talk about then maybe expanding that further to East Milton. Once it's in place for Milton Village, there's different challenges in East Milton, so that may or may not be possible, but we've looked at...
As far as mixed-use, you mean?
Zoning.
Oh, zoning, okay.
And maybe using zoning that might eventually become and put in place for Milton Village, maybe you could transfer to the square as well. But that's, that's much further down the road. So that's really what the committee's been working on. I also attended recently the, a meeting that BID Milton Hospital had to talk about the proposed merger of the parent company downtown, as well as with Lahey Clinic and Mount Auburn and New England Baptist Hospital. I know they're going to be, Richard Fernandez will be coming into a future meeting, so he'll probably cover more of those details. But it was pretty well-attended and it was a good presentation on what the benefits of that integrated broader healthcare network would provide for the system, but also for our community.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you. So we didn't have anyone for citizen speak, so there is no response. Future agenda items, a couple that I have. One, I was invited along with Michael to attend Town Government Study Committee meeting, a meeting next Monday night, I believe, to discuss some of the policies that they are entertaining, to see whether we'd be amenable to working with them on those. And so we're very fortunate to be able to sit with them. I look forward to that. Also, we have another pilot meeting coming up and, you know, we've got a great team. I call it the dream team. We've got some really solid members on there and I, and I think, you know, we're going And I, and I think, you know, we're going to be collecting data right now and we're going to be looking at making next steps and focusing on, at some point, some implementation, which I think the residents should be proud to know that we're taking this very serious and it's another way for us to, to reach out, partner with our nonprofits, but also, you know, seek some payment for some of the services that they do use on a daily basis. So provide some relief for our tax base, so.
Do we have a date on the, the DEC meeting that we talked about for July?
We haven't set that yet, so.
Bit of a development today.
Yeah, bit of a development today.
Administrator Tinlin has announced his resignation, so I put an email into, I hope it's the right gentleman at the Mastart, Mike Gulliver, I think, is his?
Jonathan Gulliver.
Jonathan Gulliver, okay. His replacement, interim replacement to try to put something together.
Okay.
Because he was adamant that they would be in the room in support of whatever the town.
Yeah, so once we hear back from Jonathan and, you know, Tom Tinlin, both, a friend of both Michael and I, having worked with us in the Marino Administration and really, honestly, one of the true and best public servants I've ever worked with, without question. I think that's common knowledge across the Commonwealth right now, yeah. But he has to take care of his health first and his family, so I think it's very important. But I, I believe that we need to wait and hear back from Mastart because I think that we do need that support, they've offered it. And to have the interim administrator join us, you know, and be briefed prior to the project, you know, I think it's going to be helpful for us moving forward.
Okay. The only other thing I have for future agenda items, and this is more of a longer-term future agenda item, but I think when we get into the fall, we need to be thinking about this. We are going to be transitioning to a five-member board, so I think we need to start thinking about logistics, like meeting room, is the Cronin Room really going to be the right fit for the number of people we're going to need to have around the table? And also, any planning that we can start doing now in anticipation of that, I think we should start thinking about maybe committees that the board might want to create, maybe look to the school committee, which has a finance subcommittee, a policy subcommittee, kind of for some guidance. Because when, it's almost the same thing as what we did when we went to the stronger town administrator before, while we were writing that legislation, we were delegating some authority anyway to the town administrator in anticipation of it. So I think, not for, not necessarily this summer, but as we start getting into the fall, we need to start thinking about that.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a great idea. And I think that without reinventing the wheel, we can talk to some of the Town Government Study, we can bring that up on, on the tent, Michael, when we're there. As they did interview several towns and discussed the structure of their board, maybe they could, they could reach out on our behalf and, and kind of see that, you know, what changes did those towns make in the first couple of years by additions and some suggestions? And maybe we could have a discussion with some of the town managers of those towns that were changed recently.
Do you have a five-member, you mean from a three-member board to a five-member board?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, I think I would want our board to drive that rather than the Government Study Committee, but they may have some help from us.
No, and I agree, I think that Michael will drive, will drive that as our town administrator. I think that we will, you know, in terms of talking to the other towns, but getting input from them as to what, what they learned, I think it's helpful for us. But I think from a policy perspective, our board will, will in turn decide which direction we want to go on that.
Yeah, and I, even just in terms of the logistics, I'm not sure how much other towns can help us with that because that's about our own physical space. And is the Cronin Room going to really be the right, do we have the right, the existing setup? Do we need a larger conference room table? Do we need a different style of a table? That, that sort of thing that I think.
This room probably serves it best. Unfortunately, it's, it might not be set up.
Maybe. I mean, some people have suggested the Council on Aging to me, I think that's less desirable, it's hard to bring all the equipment back and forth from there.
Is there a way, is a way to maybe redesign the, the Cronin Room to give it that?
Yeah, the challenge is that the Cronin Room gets used for so many meetings too. But, you know, most towns, there is a setup for the Board of Selectmen, and I think there should be for this town.
It doesn't change.
Right.
Right, just, it's in place all the time.
Or it's easily transferable.